You are watching XS LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is a September 16th, 2022 meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Commission Special Meeting. You may find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting into session. It is 5:26. So, let's get started. Self-committee. The United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to the people with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Director, on the telephone, please.
Nathan Patrick.
Present.
Randy McCormick.
Present.
Michael Benson.
Present.
Stacy Benny.
Present.
Kenneth Fly.
Present.
And Tilani Reina.
Present.
All present. Okay, who do we have on Zoom?
Valaris Campbell.
Can she hear us?
I hope.
Mr. Nazr Mawm, as well? And can you hear us?
Well, Valaris.
Let's go.
Hi.
What's Bruce Grohl?
Valaris.
Let's add some words.
Valaris.
She's here.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I unfortunately am not in place right now anymore. I just missed one.
Hello.
Is Director?
Sure, sure. Bruce, come on, but I can't, I can't.
You couldn't log in?
In Zoom, but I called you.
Okay, so he can hear us?
He can hear.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll go through the regular couple bullet points here, and then I have something that I want to start off with. We won't be here long, we've got a couple things to address. So if we can keep everything to a minimum as best we can, and just keep moving on, it's 5:00. It's already, it's Friday, so we won't be inconvenienced by that way. So approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes?
I moved that. You have the, you have.
Right, I have them.
Okay, so, okay, what's the next thing we have?
Communication.
Communication, any communication? No?
None.
Okay, what's my next?
Reports. I am happy to be back with you all. I did go to training, and while I was in training, I did put in some of that information that I got from the legislative agenda packet. Regarding Inspire and BABA is in the 2303 budget. The appropriations, the actual budget probably won't be approved until December or January because we have been elections in November. So those things, I had made sure that we're in there so you all have really, and you know, some of the things that I found out when we were there. They're doing Inspire, and Inspire they're trying for a people-first day of all housing authorities. And we ask that they do where it is not a not a penalty if they score us, that can give us, I think, but if they score, it wouldn't penalize the housing authority. They want the first year to be scoreless without a penalty, and then after that, move forward, then score us. You determine Inspire's assistance group have not given all the, they have not finished with the scoring itself. They have not given it to anybody, even the ones that they've cast data on it, they have not actually received a score because they're still working out the kings of the score. Build America by America Act was in the, one of the, went to Congress. It's for everyone, but they are having concerns because not everything in America is like energy efficient, costly, some things, and we might can get it cheaper for a foreign, so, but they are trying to work out how we can work this because that'll be in the procurement process now, and they're trying to see where it will not delay us turning payments. So we won't be penalized more, and we are adding, you know. And so they're trying to work out and hope there are some waivers for some of the things that we have to purchase so we won't have a delay, especially in our contracts when it's turning years.
I have a question. Mr. Chair. What is the deadline for the budget in this, this Sunday?
The deadline for the budget is September 30.
And you said you're not going to be able to turn it until when?
If you look in your package, the budget, the draft of the budget is in your package.
For the regular board?
Yes.
And then you said buying items or materials from a foreign country? Can you elaborate more on that?
No. Bobby is build America and buy America.
Okay, it sounded like she said buying stuff from a foreign country. I was just confused. Thank you, Ms. Hutton, you asked my question. All right. So, thank you for the update. Well, as you see, if anybody else has any more questions? I do have another question, I'm sorry. Regarding Director's report? You have another question? Okay, so if there's anything else, before we move on, I would just like to read something, and then we'll go on. I'm going to read IC Code 36-7-18-14. I'm going to read this in its entirety, and then we'll continue on here. So this is limitations on powers of authorities, Section 14. The housing authority is a municipal corporation and has all the powers necessary or convenient for carrying out the purposes of this chapter. As regards employees, IC 36-7-18-10, a housing authority may employ an executive director, technical experts, and other permanent and temporary officers, agents, and employees required by the authority, and may determine their qualifications, duties, and compensation. If a housing authority needs legal services, it may call upon the attorney for the unit or may employ its own counsel and legal staff. A housing authority may delegate powers and duties to its agents and employees. Powers of agency perform the public housing function. If a consolidated city adopts an ordinance under Section 1 of this chapter, the legislative body of or the department, division, or agency performing the public housing function has all powers granted to it by a consolidated city under the section and has all powers granted to a housing authority by and is subject to Sections 2 and 3, and it goes on of this chapter, and may exercise all those powers as commissioners of a housing authority, exercise those powers under those sections, and designate officials or employees to exercise all its powers and execute all necessary documents, instruments, or obligations. However, notes or bonds issued by the consolidated city under this chapter shall be executed and detested as other notes or bonds of the consolidated city are executed and detested. And this is IC Code 36-7-18-14. So that being said, that is on the record. You can carry on.
Subcommittee report security.
Okay, you told my residents of the security, we had a subcommittee report, we met at the Boulevard Gardens. That's the area down here right in, on 6 and 6 and 4, them are the perimeters of Boulevard Gardens, if I'm not mistaken. So our subcommittee meeting with them, I'm trying to think if we covered everything so far, what was on our agenda? It was security lights, drinking in the gazebo, hanging in lottery. We covered, we covered, we covered the grievance policy procedure for the tenants and how to go about grieving if they had any problems, and also without facing retaliation or facing any kind of evictions or anything because they came and complained about what was going on with them or their area or their living conditions. Commissioner McCormick had run out, Commissioner McCormick had run out of situation with the lights at the meeting, saying that the lights had came on, but then, you know, they never came back on. So the lights had went and got, with the Marquis Electric coming in, we keep using Marquis Electric, and they keep getting the lights turned on and turned off. They work on them, don't work on them. So it works one day, and then the next day they don't work no more. So we pay them for one day of service, and the next day they be right back on. Also, at that meeting, we addressed the security issues, and I think we have Mayor President at that, for that conversation. He claimed that he would try to help us out with security the best he could, that's non-funding wise, because he can't fund us because we're federal, but said he would try to do some kind of assistance with the city, providing some kind of security for the residents down here. As of right now for the security, we paying the police department a wage, and I'm not sure how, how much they're fulfilling that agreement. I'm not positive on it, so I can't put a statement or a quote on there, but I'm pretty sure like I said, they're not mandated. You know, they're not mandated down here too much. They not down here, but I'm sure they're getting a little cut, been a couple hours, man, since they've been down here a couple hours, so. That's either you or there. What else happened at that meeting I should address that would be majorly important? I'll pass it down to maybe Commissioner McCormick, because then Commissioner Benny is also on that subcommittee. I just picked out the phase values, if they want to say it on a detail, that'd be great.
When it comes to the security, we have serious issues in both developments. Lakeland Estates is more internal than Boulevard Gardens. We have a lot of tenants who are who have decided to be very violent towards other residents. We just had one of our, I'm surprised that wasn't in our report, but we just had partially our center in Lakeland Estates was burnt down. The vinyl sign was completely burnt off, a power supply was burned off. Several parties after that, a couple of days later, we had more parties. It's been reported today. We have encouraged everyone to follow the chain of command, which will be at that time the property manager and then Ms. Hutton. Sadly, I really don't see where we're going to go and how we can move further without an attorney present because we need to make sure these people are being evicted, and we have new people that need to be added to the eviction list. And before I turn this over to Ms. Benny, that's something to say, I would just like to ask Ms. Hutton a question so we can correct the record. Can you tell us what was the company that came and repaired the lights?
The company that came and repaired the lights was
The Boulevard.
Was Marquis, that's what I was telling.
And how many times have we used them?
I only use Marquis. I'm not sure.
Every time.
No, no, Marquis ain't been every time. Amcor was before, and Amcor called us and told us they needed a locator, and Marquis came out, and they were able to cut it on because I was told Marquis was the ones that originally put the lights out.
So are the lights working now?
Yes.
Okay. And then my next question is, what is our policy on tenants resorting to violence or fighting with other tenants? Do we have a zero policy in place that we can immediately start the eviction process on those who want to be violent and use handguns or gun theory?
Well, normally we get a police report or anything like that, and from the police report and the addresses are the names of who were involved, we'll start eviction proceedings based on the address who was involved, if it was a tenant or it was a visitor or boyfriend or whatever, whoever the resident is.
Okay, I have recommendations after this, but I will pass, I will pass on to fellow chair, fellow Commissioner Benny.
I think Commissioner Fly and Commissioner McCormick covered various things as far as both resident initiative slash security items that we addressed under our subcommittee out at Lakeland Estates and also here. However, one of the things, well, several of the things that we discussed at our meeting down here, we had a great turnout, and a lot of the tenants had various concerns, including the safety of the safety, the security, the different lighting fixtures and the loitering going on in addition to maintenance coming into their homes without advising them ahead of time. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up is, it was mentioned in one of the emails with our Director Bruce Nesterom. I haven't had any contact with him, but one of the concerns that I have is regarding a statement that he made in one of the emails. And that statement stated something to the effect of, it was reported that Commissioner McCormick, possibly myself, Commissioner Fly, were going into tenants' homes uninvited. That is totally untrue, totally untrue. We had a decent turnout out there in Lakeland Estates. The tenants were very engaged in the concerns of the things going out there. They were very encouraged at the things that we told them that we're trying to do out there and implement out there, which we have started, you know, assisting in some of those implementations with Mrs. Hutton, under Mrs. Hutton. But as far as going into tenants' homes, that's not true. We had tenants after the meeting that were running up to us stating, you know, can you please come to my home? They invited us. Can you please come to my home and look at the various repairs that are needed? Look at the bullet holes that are in our walls that have been reported and have heard nothing? Look at the cabinets that are unhinged, have no doors, and they're unhinged. Very, I mean, but this goes on and on and on. These are concerns that the tenants themselves invited us, invited us, not us just going broke into their homes. They invited us to come into their homes. They invited us to see what was going on firsthand. So I beg to differ, you know, I'm very concerned that, I don't know where that came from, from Director Nesterom, Bruce Nesterom, but that is totally untrue, and I'm very appalled to hear that that statement is out there. Because we take, we take what we're doing seriously, and there's no way we would ever violate a tenant's home.
Ms. Hutton, for the record, could you tell us who relayed that message to Mr. Nazr, Director Bruce? If Mr. Bruce don't mind, the director of HUD, that I or anyone else was going into tenants' properties or units unannounced?
Or uninvited?
Or uninvited, correct. Who was the person who reported that?
Where did that come from? Because it was in, it was in black and white in an email as
Mr. Nazr. It's online.
Is Director Nesterom, are you on the email, the Zoom call?
Did you, did you say that to him? Did you indicate to Mr. Nazr that that's what was happening?
No. Mr. Nesterom, can you respond to that statement or allegation?
If you are trying to respond, you're still on mute. Bruce?
Mr. Nesterom, can you hear us?
I don't know, you can't throw a box on that, yeah, Mr. Nesterom?
It was slightly a little bit earlier, so. Don't forget, we have other things there.
Okay.
So this is shoot and not respond.
Yeah, there's serious allegations need to be addressed.
They said that we are also, he also indicated that we are violating our insurance policy.
I'm sorry, did I hear my name?
Yes, a question was asked of you by Commissioner Benny. Do you want to repeat your question?
Did you hear anything that I said over the last two or three minutes, Mr. Nazr? My name is Stacy Benny, I'm a leader commissioner.
I'm a little difficult to join in, but I have the last couple of sentences that you made, but I didn't hear the beginning of those sentences.
So basically, I gave interpretation of everything that has happened as far as us meeting with the resident initiative slash security subcommittee, and after that subcommittee, in a nutshell, we were invited and basically, you know, took by the hand by some of these residents to come into their homes to see some of the issues that are going on firsthand. At some point in time, there was an email that came out that was authored by you stating that Mr. Commissioner McCormick and possibly myself, Commissioner Benny, Commissioner Fly, were going into the residents' homes uninvited. And I stated that that is totally untrue. And I feel offended that that was made, that kind of was made because I know for a fact that that is untrue. The tenants wanted us to see some of the things that were the status of the conditions in their home, including bullet holes in the walls, different water damage that had been reported and unresolved, door handles from the cabinets that weren't fixed, and the list goes on and on and on. It was, as I stated, the email went out and was authored by you stating that we went into the homes uninvited. And I would like to know where that came from. Ms. Hutton said that she did not relay that to you. I would like to know where that came from.
Well, I'm not here to, to defend or accuse anybody of doing anything. Then what I am trying to caution the board is, because this is what the, what I'm trying to caution the board is that the board cannot be involved in the day-to-day activity of the housing authority, and it's not the role of the board. The board visiting, the tenants calling the board members to come to their units, and the board goes to their unit to investigate what is going on. That is not the board's role. There's a house process and procedures on how to deal with tenant complaints. If those tenant complaints cannot help with
According to
the zip code director, as of the property manager, then that tenant will come to the board meeting and and, you know, let's approach the complaint with the board, and then the board can follow that process. But they cannot go out and reach out straight to the board, and the board doesn't expect their unit. That is not the process.
Ms. Hutton?
It's not the procedure.
Ms. Hutton?
Because if there's, if there's, if there's anything that happens and the tenants sue the board or sue the government that came into the unit or something happens, the level they're in, public housing legislation will not cover those.
Excuse me, Mr. Director? Try to get, excuse me, Mr. Director. Mr. Director, this is Commissioner McCormick. You sent out an email besmirching, you sent out an email besmirching my name. You stated that you was told that I was going into, you stated that I was going into properties, units, unannounced, without prior notices, without prior notice, and you stated this. Where did you get that information from?
I did not, I did not, I did not state I was too.
Mr. Chair, can you read this?
Read my, read my email out.
Okay, one moment. Director Nazr, we'll read your email here. I quote, "Mr. Vice Chairman, you should be more worried about earning your role as board commissioner and not meddling in the day-to-day activities of the housing authority like dealing directly with staff to the extent that they have resigned their positions, property manager, section A director, and accounting manager, knocking on tenants' doors and going into their apartments without prior notice, asking to fire all housing authority staff without the faintest knowledge of what they do or the programs," end quote.
Okay, so, yes, I said that, I did not say anybody said anything to me. I said I'm just going through the day-to-day activities of the housing authority and trying to verify, you know, Mr. McCormick on my response to his email.
Thank you, thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Director. I think that you owe me an apology, but I will seek
I owe you an apology, sir. I know you owe me an apology because I think you have to
Thank you, sir.
Day-to-day activities of the housing authority. If I owe you an apology, I'll give you an apology. This is just, I know you owe me an apology.
Okay, thank you for your response. Thank you for your response. Okay, we have it on the record. So was that all your questions to the Director?
Exactly, or does that conclude the subcommittee? That concludes it for myself.
Yeah, that's good. No, subcommittee report, does anybody got any questions on the board for us?
I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to prolong this meeting or anything, but when I see security, it's not just about what happened, it's what are we doing to prevent from happening? I understand, you know, we heard about lights, but lights does nothing but shine and give, give better eyes to people that are doing the wrong. When we had our last meeting out at Lakeland, we had a resident talking about here at Boulevard Gardens that people were sleeping in the hallways because the locks to the main area, has that been addressed? We also had a resident talking about people smoking crack or whatever and dealing right underneath a broken camera. They laughed at it and said the cameras never work anyway, and we addressed that issue.
Yes, we have.
So we have working cameras?
No, not yet. What I've done is I've gotten, I've met with three contractors for the camera system, and they're sending in their quotes, and I have also worked with Snyder and given him, he came out and did everything, and he's told me it would take a while, but then he's in the process of ordering the stuff for the doors. We gave him the keys.
Madam, please, real quick, please. So we, do you have to formulate another RFP for that to be done?
For?
For the security and other stuff?
Formulate another RFP for which one?
For the security cameras and
No, no, they're going to give, it was broken down, we did walkthroughs, and they're going to give me the post for each side.
Do we have a timeframe, a timeline?
I contacted them this week when I came back to see where they were giving me proposals because they broke it up into four sections, four to five sections. And so right now, as of yesterday, I received one quote back, and I'm waiting on the other gentleman to give it up.
So we have to get some kind of procurement to get to, to secure getting this done, correct?
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. So you, you taking bids, you taking, you taking bids and stuff, correct?
Yes.
How can we, how can we move forward, board, when we don't have an attorney? And according to Mr. Director, Mr. Bruce Nesterom, Ms. Hutton doesn't know how to do this properly. If she can't get us helping us turn your apartment properly, why are we moving forward with this situation? with this situation? There's a likelihood that we're gonna be rejected because apparently our secretary, our executive director doesn't know how to do the RFP, correct? It's just, if I may, I will yield for 14, ma'am. I just think it's, I think it's ridiculous for us to continue. I think it's ridiculous for us to continue without an attorney. So, that's my opinion, and...
I just have a question also as far as the procurement part of it. We have a subcommittee, a procurement subcommittee, excuse me, and to my knowledge, I thought that from that initial meeting before it was turned over to the procurement subcommittee and then brought back to us, I thought that we did everything that we were supposed to do.
So, one moment, not to cut you off, are we still under, are we still under sub, just so we can stay out in line here, are we still under subcommittee, other security? Have we concluded that portion?
Yeah. He asks questions. Well, I just can reject it because I'm just, I'm unclear.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a statement. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and Chairman, did you, was that...
Well, I'm not in the job of security, but I think we got much mixed up in meetings and a long day ahead of us, so we can continue on if there's no more questions for security.
Okay. Okay.
I wanted to make a comment regarding the RFP.
For security?
Yes. With the RFP, I'm working along with the TA getting this information. I'm not doing it by myself. I'm working with the TA. And the RFP that was done for the legal was also done by the TA. Do we, so we have a TA? Yes. What is her name? Toni DiDi.
But didn't we receive an email from...
We were, we didn't, he's not giving us a TA.
I thought we weren't paying for a TA.
He wasn't paying for a TA.
We have one. We have a TA.
Okay.
I just want to say it for the record again, there's a question of law involved here, legal advice. And I'm not comfortable taking legal advice from someone who has not passed the law. We have legal question that needs to be answered. We have, we need an experienced attorney, and right now we don't have one. I'm not trying to offend you, Ms. Hudson, if you took it that way, please forgive me. I just want to make sure that you, as I always said, that I believe that you need help, you need an assistant, we needed a TA here, but I received an email, Mr. Our director said he wasn't gonna provide us one because he's saying we wasting funds. We need to ask him, we need to ask him and his collective, his group of collective people that have more than 200 years of experience to help us, to help, and not, and not go through a TA. That's, that's how the last forums got put off the board because they did not have legal counsel, accurate legal counsel. I still stand by my decision, I think, because you...
I just want to, not to tread on my, I just want to know, how long do Bruce Nesr, that will come on, yourself, Ms. Hudson, how long do you guys, can you guys sit here and not have us have an attorney? What's we supposed to keep doing? What we're supposed to ultimately keep doing?
So let's do this, not to cut you off, let's do this. I'll entertain a motion so that we can, if we want to get right into this, I'll entertain a motion that we readjust the agenda here. Agenda and move that, I'll entertain that motion, and then we can get into that. So...
So I'll make a motion that we adjust the current agenda and move up some of the other pending items that seem more pressing at this time for sake of time.
Okay.
Director Nesr, can we roll on to you? Chairman Patrick, aye. Ryan McCormick, aye. Michael Vincent, aye. Stacy Bennet, aye. Kenneth Fly, aye. Talani Reyna, aye.
Okay. So, at the top of that unfinished business, we have attorney update, so that's where we'll go and talk about the attorney update, so if you want to finish your statement.
Yeah, I'd like to get some kind of recollection or any kind of hypothesis of, how long do you actually think that we're supposed to sit up here as board members as a collective group and also be affording things to the community and the tenants and the residents without an attorney and go back and forth on an email saying who said what and what said who, while we still don't have legal reputation, we still guessing about things we're doing, and right when we make a mistake, we're gonna get reprimanded and lashed out on as if we intentionally try to leave the housing authority into abandonment. Bruce, this question is for you. How long do you think it'll be before you understand or think that you understand that we need an attorney very immediately without an extra procurement? How about you just take control and let us have an attorney without the extra stuff and catch up with the extra stuff later, but for right now, we need some attorney guidance. And if we don't think that's necessary, I don't see how you're trying to think the best for us as a board and as a housing authority in general. That's common knowledge.
And I will add to that, given Mr. Bruce a chance to question, I will add to that, as of today, we are the only housing authority in America that does not have an attorney, unit that does not have an attorney. So, the question's on the table for Mr. Director, I will leave. Forgive me.
Can I hear this part for you, Mr. Bruce Nesr? This is Commissioner Fly.
Yes, Commissioner, just give me one second, just give me one second, my channel touched me up into my vision, but you do this.
Okay, we'll wait.
Let me check another question while we wait, or do you want to just wait?
We'll wait.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm back, okay. So, I responded to you guys' emails and looked at the procurement process that you followed. It was a violation of your own policy, it is a violation of House policy. And I told you guys that, you know, we need to go back and do it right so that we could approve it. We want you guys to have an attorney, and it's really, there's really needed that you have an attorney to protect your guys' interest and, you know, for the house authority's interest. But what you're asking us to do is to intentionally approve something that violates House rules, and we're not going to do that. And what we're trying to do is to work with you to make it do correctly and make sure that when we approve it, it is done correctly. Mr. McCormick was the one that said that we violated the CFR. And we think, well, if you violated the CFR in the last one that we approved, we want to make sure that we don't do that again. So that is what we're trying to avoid, to, you know, correct to Mr. McCormick to violate the CFR again. So, we just said, we have a technical assistant there that will walk you, you know, hold your hands and walk you through to keep the process correct, and we will approve it.
Okay, Nesr, just one last time, this Commissioner Fly, I want to say, what's the, so we can bring back that same attorney if we do it correctly that we approved of initially and get him back in the same way we did Charles Freeman when he was four days late, he had to rebid it again. So are we able to do this with the same attorney that you rejected? Can we bring him back to the table, we're doing it the correct way that you want us to? The same way we just did Charles Freeman?
I didn't, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, can you do what you just said?
Can we, can we please bring back the same attorney that we just all approved but just got denied, and if we do it correctly with him and get it approved by you? And I said it was similar to the way we just did Charles Freeman when he was four days late, and you guys told him to rebid it, and he came back and hired him again anyways. So we want to do the same thing with the attorney you just denied. We want to come back and do it the right way, as you say, and use the same attorney.
I didn't have, I didn't have any issue with the attorney, I have an issue with the process. That was not one of your... That's not, that's not an issue, I don't have an issue with the attorney that you made it, I do not have an issue with that attorney.
Okay, so we got to do it right.
I'm just wanting to make sure that Mr. McCormick doesn't charge us again, that we want to make sure that the CFR is being followed to the team.
Mr., for all of our fellow board members, Mr. Nesr has completely misquoted you. I definitely said that the last attorney that we had, which was Charles Freeman, not his law firm, Harris Law Firm, the last attorney that we had, we followed the Michigan City, the Michigan City Housing Authority procurement policy. Number one, the bid was never opened in public. No one opened the bids in public, it was never sent to committee for bid. But Mr. Nesr is continually saying that I'm holding up this process. I am not holding up this process, I'm gonna let this go. I just want to correct the record. My quote was, statement was, the last attorney that we hired, which was done illegally, and Mr. Nesr was a part of that illegal activity, and that's what I stated on, and I stand on that. I yield the rest of my time to Mr. Vincent, our head of our procurement committee.
Mr. Nesr, my name is Michael Vincent, and I'm one of the, and I'll call us volunteers. We are all, we all volunteer, and we sacrifice a lot of our personal time here, and I'm sure you've seen a lot of that, and you've sacrificed a lot of your personal time, so you can, you can probably sympathize with some of our frustration. And when we got together, we looked at the procurement policy, and we, as a collective board, tried to follow that to the letter and do, and just as we're gonna continue to do, everything by the book, by the letter, and do it correctly. That's what we want to do here. And when we opened the bids in public, we subcommitted and we looked at the bids, we scored the bids, and we brought the scorecard back to the board in a public venue, and we made recommendations to the board. The board then elected and voted for the attorney of choice, which is Harris at this point. During that meeting, we handed it over to our executive director to communicate to you the wishes of the board. Now, we are all confused, and we're all, we don't understand the continuing emails back and forth, and even today, you telling us we have to do it correctly. We don't understand the process that we missed. If there's anything that we missed, if there's a piece of paper that we left off on the form, we need to know what that is. So can you, can you please help us in that regard? We just want to move on because we want to move on.
Thank you, sir, for, for answering that question to me, but let me explain, let me explain the process to you. The chief procurement officer for a housing authority is the executive director. Executive director, Mr. McCormick gave my last words because he wants to take control of this process.
Sir, put me to my name, you just, you got the board, board, you just, you take away.
The office of the housing authority is the executive director. The executive director publishes the RFP, and the proposals who come in, many type of proposals that comes in is date stamped and timed out to make sure that it came in on time. When the date, the RFP poses out, the opening of the bid is a public event, there will be open on a public event, everything will be open, okay? The housing authority, you have a committee of staff members, not board members, staff members, that have character, that have a way to write those proposals that come in. Once they write those proposals and choose to bid, then they will submit, if they have a committee, if you have a committee, they will submit to the committee, that committee to review and the board committee to ask all the questions, and they will, and why you have the process. And once that process is completed, then it will be presented as a resolution to the board, to the whole board to approve. And that is the process. What the board member cannot, open the bid, review the bid, write the bid, and approve the bid, it doesn't happen, that's conflict of interest. That means you open the bid, you review the bid, you write the bid, and then you turn around and approve the bid, and we have, and the votes, that is, that is not how it works.
Okay, Mr.?
That is not how it works.
Yes, I'm following you.
I know it won't work that way. You know, I know, I know that you guys...
You answered that question, sir. Point order.
I asked them how the procurement process working in other housing authorities.
Point order, Mr. Chairman, he asked you the question. We need to move forward.
Director Nesr?
The board is telling you guys, you don't wanna believe it, so ask other housing authorities.
Why ask me an argument? That's what we need an attorney.
Director Nesr, thank you. You've answered the question. We've got a couple of questions more for you.
I'm unclear about one thing. You're talking about five people in a subcommittee? Sir?
Are you, are you, are you talking to...
I am. You're having a conversation right now, and I thought, maybe you misspoke, but our subcommittees are three or less to avoid any quorum, any quorum issues. We're three and four mixed in board decision. So we limited all of our subcommittees to three people. Three people looked over this bid, and I thought you told me our subcommittee's supposed to be five. That violates our quorum rules.
That's correct, three people can look, you know, but those three people cannot write the proposals, that's what I'm saying, those three people write the proposals and sign off on it.
So who writes the proposals?
The proposals are written by the committee, which are the executive director of the procurement, you know, there's three staff members that make up the committee, you know, that writes, that has a selection process.
Sorry, I put you on board, but I still don't understand.
After the writing of those proposals, proposals...
I'll leave. Sir? Sir? Sir?
Yes, sir.
Are we missing, are we missing, in this latest proposal for attorney, are we missing the error that we should have had the executive director in our subcommittee to write?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, you know, Mr....
You said it.
Saying, what I'm saying is, the subcommittee does not open the bids and write the bids, which is what happened here. The board members, subcommittee, board members, they did not open the bids.
Let's make sure, I just want to, is this on the record? Is what he's saying, are we able to transcribe what he's saying? Is it being recorded?
Transcribed.
So, Director Nesr, I have a question for you. This is Chairman Patrick here. Are you able to show us what you're, what you're relating to us? Are you able to point that out in writing within the Michigan City Housing Authority's procurement policy?
I said, I said, I said, the chairman, I copied all of you guys, on, for your own policies, who is the procurement, who's the, the procurement process is in charge of the housing authority procurement process.
She is, she can tell, she's intelligent.
The charter policy is amended, it's not in compliance with all the procurement process, your policy is, which you have in that technical assistance, that is, this policy, the one that you have that you're following to what it is.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Director Hudson, Director Hudson, is what he's saying in the procurement policy, can you show us? Are you gonna show us?
And also in our bylaws, could you please show us where you're supposed to sit on the procurement committee? That you're supposed to be the one sitting on our procurement committee.
And are you understanding that you are supposed to be on that committee?
Because I don't recall, I don't recall as we were going through this process, Director Hudson, you didn't tell us that we weren't supposed to be doing this. So you were actually helpful, helped us be with the process, so...
Everyone has that procurement policy in front of them, correct?
Yeah.
So when she called out the page, we can look along with her, and again, this is another reason why we need an attorney. He's confusing the mess up, I mean, he's just the record of it, and I'm seeing the different things, and he's saying it's not true for the record, it's totally untrue. And this ain't about, I don't know, I don't know, I just, I feel so...
It's conflicting for me.
Yes. He's interfering with our day-to-day running, not only of this housing authority, but it's us commissioners, meeting month-to-month, all the things we have to do every day.
This is, he's confused.
I think A16.
A16.
Let her leave, please, give, chill, Commissioner Flom, forgive it. We got A16?
Yeah, I saw you in the background.
No, 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 I was asking, let this Hudson.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It, it, it is, it is responsibility for her to carry out our policy. But not to settle our, get that, not to settle our board, I mean, not to settle the procurement, any of our committees. That is the secretary's duties, that's correct.
For the sentence, other than approval of the procurement policy, approval of, by the board of commissioners is not required for any procurement action as permitted under state and local law. Whether it is the responsibility of the executive director to make sure that all procurement actions are conducted in accordance with the policy contained in it. While the executive director is responsible for ensuring that MCA's procurement comply with the policy, the executive director may delegate all procurement authority as necessary and appropriate to conduct the business of the agent. Further, in accordance with the declaration of authority, the executive director shall, where necessary, establish operational procedures such as procurement manual and standard operating procedure to implement this policy. The executive director shall be also, excuse me, establish a saint, a system of sanctions for violation of the ethical standards prescribed in section two, system with the federal, state.
Wait a minute, this Hudson, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. After you receive the bid package, you reopen it in, you reopen the bids in public?
Yes.
And then did you, did you hand off those bids to, to the, to the procurement, uh, committee? Did you, did you or did you not?
Yeah.
Did, did you also assist in making sure that those bid package was all, that everything that we did, including the grading of the evaluation, was handed over to the procurement committee, correct?
Yes.
So what did you do wrong?
My understanding.
No, no, I'm not asking you what somebody else told you what you did wrong. I'm asking you, what did you do, did, what did you do wrong? You turned over, you, you made it, and you did it. If we wanna follow what y'all trying to put down on us right now, you did turn that over willingly. You turned that, the, the, the bid, the stuff over to the procurement committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and everyone was bidding, everyone was bidding on that, correct?
Yes.
I have one more question.
So, so Director Hudson, would you say that, cause it says further and in accordance with delegation, so basically everything that Commissioner McCormick just spelled out, would you say that you delegated your authority in this process to the board?
To the procurement?
Yes.
But, uh, the procurement committee cannot.
But did you delegate?
Did you delegate it?
Your authority to the board to do that.
For the record, did you delegate that, you turned it over to his guard?
Gave it to the procurement.
So you delegated, so that's an A16, and then also reading to state, state law here, a housing authority may employ an executive director, technical expert, other permanent and temporary officers, and it goes on and on, even with the attorney for the unit or may employ its own counsel and legal staff. So I'm just gonna stop there, I got one question, uh, one more question here. So, um, Director Nesr, will you be, so, well, real quick. So you submitted everything over to Director Nesr, correct?
Yeah.
And you sent via email everything that you submitted over to him, right? So he states here, he states here in the email, um, as HUD procurement expert, he's referring to.
Mr. McCormick.
Mr. McCormick here, you should have known that the board is not involved in the procurement process, including opening and ranking the bids, but their only role is to approve or deny the executive director's recommendation. If you are involved in opening, ranking the bid as the evidence shows, it will be denied. HUD denied approval, gone, 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 ED presented to selection. So basically, he says as you, and he also says here, you should have known to, um, submit the correct documents to me. Oh, as HUD procurement expert, you should know the correct documents to send me that will allow me to approve, deny, or procure for an attorney. So my question is.
Me, he wanted, he wanted.
He resorted that to him, so, but you're the secretary, so did you submit the proper documents to him, or did you not?
I submitted the documents to.
So he's saying here in this.
The issue, no.
This Hudson?
Okay.
The issue that Mr. Nesr is saying is that as a board member, you cannot rank and tally.
Where's the, so, but, but, so you're saying the things that we did that you delegated to us? According to the procurement policy?
Happened in the.
That you delegated to us?
In the procurement committee, they could not rank and.
But that you delegated to us, correct?
Correct.
You delegated that to us, you brought us, as we sat here, you brought us the documents, you delegated that.
Well, you all told me y'all.
So you delegated those. Okay, so the question is, Director Nesr, will you be approving our, uh, attorney for the board, for the unit?
Can you reply to that in a minute?
Will, yes, sir, will you be approving the unit's attorney?
Will I be approving, approving the unit's attorney?
Yes, sir, will you be approving the unit's attorney? You stated that you're willing to approve, um, legal representation to carry out evictions, but not the unit attorney, so I think, so evictions is more important than having representation, which we can't fully carry out or function as a board without having legal counsel. So the question is, will you be approving legal counsel for the unit?
Remember, if you go back and look at the email, that was originally sent to Mr. McCormick. He says, you know, his project that he gave an attorney to contribute the vision, you know, for the safety of the resident.
Right.
And they responded, and responded, and I'm doing, I approve an emergency procurement to an attorney.
Unit needs an attorney. So just for the, so will you be approving, at this time, will you approve, um, the attorney for the unit? Through the housing, through the housing unit that we selected?
I will approve it, the process will be done correctly, yes.
Okay, so at this time, I want to relinquish the chair.
Check me.
And I'm gonna make a motion. So before I make this motion, um, I'm going to, uh, bring in consideration the COCC funding. So the COCC is a business unit within the Public Housing Authority that generates fee income from the management of public housing, HCV and other programs. Expenses accounted for in the COCC are recovered through charging reasonable fees. Fee income earned by the COCC is considered de-federalized income. Consider creating two equity and cash accounts. So therefore, since it's de-federalized and we are in zero threshold, which means that anything over a dollar, you must approve. So we will take that off your hands, and I'm gonna make a motion. State law prevents the housing authority to contract for legal services. So I move at this time to approve the proposed contract where Harris Law Firm legal services can be paid from the COCC funds until such time that we receive from the Indiana HUD director approval, um, for the use of federal funds.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
There's a fact there.
Oh. Madam Chair, I mean, Ms., uh, Executive Director, I mean, roll call please. There's a motion, and there was a second.
Nathan Patrick?
Aye.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
Michael Vincent?
Aye.
Stacy Benny?
Aye.
Kenneth Fly?
Yeah.
And Talani, Talani Rayner?
Aye.
Okay.
Ayes, excuse me.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I am directing, Director Hudson, to, um, move on securing our attorney with Harris Law Firm through the COCC fund.
I am, I will make a motion that this will be done expedite, expeditely, and, uh, that it will be done within the next seven, within, by next week, no later than Tuesday. I move that, that she make sure that the necessary paperwork is drawn and that we move forward. We do not, this money is not, is not ours, we're not going to discuss it. We make sure that the bid, uh, whatever needs to be paid to Harris Law Firm, we ask that you do this by, by Tuesday of next week.
Is that a motion?
There's a motion on the floor.
I second that.
Director, on your own.
Nathan Patrick?
Aye.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
Michael Vincent?
Aye.
Stacy Benny?
Aye.
Kenneth Fly?
Aye.
And Talani Rayner?
Aye.
Do you have anything to add to this?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm trying to explain to you all that we got a small housing authority, we don't get COCC.
What funds do you have that are de-federalized? I know.
No, 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 sir, we're not, you're not, we're not giving it forward to you right now.
The non-for-profit, so I relinquish the chair. I rescind my motion, and my new motion is I move that we obtain legal services with Harris Law Firm through the non-for-profit fund, which are de-federalized funds.
I second.
I will, I will go along with this as long as if, if what you're, what Ms. Hudson's saying is correct, it's another reason again why we need an attorney to check and see. Cause people can fix their mouth to say anything, there is a second on the floor, can we have a roll call please?
Nathan Patrick?
Aye.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
Michael Vincent?
Aye.
Stacy Benny?
Aye.
Kenneth Fly?
Aye.
Talani Rayner?
Aye.
Okay, so I move that Director Hudson, that that is carried out through the non-for-profit fund. Okay, so at this time, um, being that we, um, we can't really continue business without legal, legal services.
There's one question, there's one question I need to ask this lady before we adjourn the speaker. Um, there was also a, Mr. Nesr also indicated in his email that we have three members who have decided to, to, um, step down. And he indicated that all three members, all three of those members, the housing manager, I believe, the finance director, and the Section 8 director has all stepped down because of me. Is that a true statement? Did you at any time tell Mr. Bruce Nesr that, that made that statement to him, or to Ms. Callen?
I did not make that statement to Mr. Nesr, no.
Is, is the reason why you indicated to us that Mr. Curtis, who was the housing, Mr. Lewis, who was the housing manager at this time, you stated that he was going to leave? You told us, uh, months ago that he was leaving, correct?
No, I didn't tell you he was leaving, I told you he was temporary.
He was temporary, but he was.
But I was looking for a good time.
Correct?
Yes.
You also, Ms. Talani, she came in and said for personal reasons she was leaving, correct?
That's correct.
Um, Section 8 director, um, during, uh, uh, a break, she clearly stated that she left because of choice. She chose to leave here, is that, is that what you, is that what you understand what she said?
That's what, um, she told me she told you, yes.
Yes, she did tell you that I said that.
Yes.
And she told you about the argument too, correct?
Yes.
I also recommended, and I guess I'm gonna move, I recommended that we just, because of us, uh, her, her, um, she's so discouraged and, um, tired of being here, tired of hearing my voice, which she clearly stated in front of everyone. I, I move that we go ahead and, um, add up her funds, what's owed to her. If we can legally do this, I don't know, but I'm gonna put the motion on the floor, that we add what we owe her and sever ties with her ASAP, uh, effective, uh, by Monday, instead of waiting to the end of the month.
Aye.
My motion is, I'm leaving the motion, I had a second.
In the motion, I'm making clear that we, we are to call, add, uh, have the executive director add up what's owed to Ms. How, the Section 8 director, since she's so uncomfortable here and there's just so much for her, that we just go ahead and pay off the remainder of her days that's owed, and let her go. That's what's her current mandate, at the end of this month.
So are you saying?
There was, there was a heated, um, there's words that was changed.
Well, well, what I'm saying, let her go now or here, the money ain't gonna make a difference. Let's go and get rid of it right now, before another weekend gonna make a break us. Add up, chop it up, second, let go call that, she come home.
Just a clarification, so we will pay her whatever's due this week, next week, till the end of her term or her resignation, and then she will be gone effective Monday.
Once she gets stepped, I guess, that's what I want.
We'll pay her off and then she can.
Yes.
I pay my first quarter, pass.
Nathan Patrick?
I'm staying.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
Michael Vincent?
Aye.
Stacy Benny?
Aye.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly?
I just don't see how it's gonna make us a break us to let her go anyway, might as well not have a say.
Aye.
Aye.
Talani Rayner?
Aye.
Five to one.
And again, if there's anything, I will fall on this sword, if there's any legal repercussion of this, I will blame it on HUD. It's clear that Mr. Nesr was saying that we, that we will, he will provide us help if we ask him, and we ask for an attorney. Ms., I don't know if you heard it, Mr. Nesr, but for the record, Ms. Hood, Ms. Hudson clearly indicated that she relinquished her duties over to us to carry those duties out. So we did follow the Michigan City, and by the way, we did follow the Michigan City procurement policy. Ms. Hudson did exactly what she supposed to do. She did not do anything wrong in this instance. I, I, I just do it disheartened, and I would like to, that's my commissioner coming, and, uh, and anybody else, I just, we need everybody speaking in, adjourned.
Mr. Nesr, this is Michael Vincent, this is Michael Vincent again. Hello? Mr. Nesr, this is Michael Vincent, I, I would just like to, I would just like to implore you to rebook at the attorney. I feel that we have been signing contracts in the past that leave not only us and Michigan City Housing Authority, but yourself, and the state and federal HUD to great liabilities. We by accident discovered that we have, we have people doing work on grounds, no removal, possibly leaf and grass removal, that do not have proper insurances for businesses. Uh, I do know that Marquis Electric is available to get the insurance, I'm not sure they have it with our, our holder name for the Michigan City Housing Authority. A, an attorney would help to give those polite, and make sure that our contractors have what they need. Uh, every time that somebody comes in and turns a wrench now, I'm afraid that they don't have the correct insurance. And if somebody gets hurt, if they cause damage, it's not the Michigan City Housing Authority, it's, it's gonna be you folks downstate that are gonna be concerning yourselves with that. So that's one of the things that we wanted to straighten out in your, your quote unquote day-to-day operations that we're into. And the dinner, the more that we dig, the more water we find here, and we need an attorney to help us out with that. So I, I, no need to comment back, I'm, I'm just, I'm just stating facts, and I'm just stating why we're so diligently trying to get an attorney in here. It's not, it, it's not to protect ourselves personally, it's protect us as a housing authority. The, I hope you can respect that. No need to, no need to reply.
I do respect, I do respect that.
Thank you, any other commissioner?
I have a comment also, uh, the commissioner commented, I'm gonna leave, I have a volume that the German, though, I'm kinda, you know, yeah, I better be easy. But what I'm gonna say is, is I'm scared you're not. But what I'm gonna say, Mr. Nesrul, is I don't understand your logic, I don't understand your logic, brother, of, uh, having us be out here, uh, sacrificed like this, and, uh, I'm very discouraged, um, almost teary-eyed, because you willing to sit here and just watch us do this and use funds from unknown sources and all that just to get some representation. And you can just sit there and allow it, just, just be cool with it, brother. And while you were here in person, man, I would like to see the smirk on your face, 'cause I know you're loving it. So other than that, uh, we gonna get out of here.
One more.
Mr. Fly, I'd like to ask a question before you leave, if one thing, not involving the attorney or anything else, I'm uncomfortable as a, as a commissioner, having meetings here due to parking restrictions, due to restrictions of technology, you can see how our, kinda slow chat, we can hardly hear anybody on Zoom, um, the, the access to residents, if we have more than a dozen people wanting to attend our meeting, we gonna have room for them. I'd like to move or have a discussion on moving the, the meetings going forward to City Hall in the auditorium.
I, I will, I will second having the discussion to get that started at our next meeting, and we get it on the agenda, yeah, our regular meeting to discuss that. We'll be more than willing to discuss that and making sure that we are not, um, in any conflict. Again, we don't know if we can move our mechanic, 'cause we are autonomous.
That's sad.
Yeah, we need to know, huh? I've already got an invite.
No.
Okay, all right. So it will be on the, the chair will put that on the, on the agenda. Very good.
Is that gonna be the September meeting?
So then we need to do an amendment, you guys, to, uh, agenda.
Commissioner, do, do, do.
Point of order, point of order. The next commissioner, he can have comments from any other commissioners?
No comments, I mean.
Uh, I, I have a comment. We gonna continue on unfinished business next time? Uh, I'm getting highly frustrated with kicking the can down the road with things that were supposed to be so important on my first meeting, such as the power lines being trimmed because of, of potential power failures, storm damage, uh, leaf season is right around the corner, uh, the grievance that we heard from, I, I've never seen a board or, or a entity that can kick hands down the road like we can. I would like to, and I know we're waiting on an attorney, but some things we don't need an attorney for. We do need an attorney to sign contracts, but we don't need an attorney to make plans.
There's one, there's only one problem, we can talk about the plans, and we will talk about the plans, but when we talk about plans, we gotta have action. You're tired, you, we, I'm exhausted. So just imagine on the tennis field. Exactly, so at this point, Mr. Director can just, he can do what's right and give us the funds so we can move forward, so the unit can have an attorney. There, I don't see what he's, if, right now, Miss Hudson, they brought him, I wanna just say this for the record, Mr. Nesrul has provided us with a TA person. The TA person didn't help you do the, the bid for legal services, correct?
Yes.
His professional people that he sent in, with the 200 years of collective, uh, working together and living, they did this. His people came, Ms., 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 um, they, Ms. Hudson didn't write the name, she relinquished it, even though I don't think, there's nowhere in our procurement policy that, in fact, she cannot be one of the, she cannot even settle our subcommittee. It's, it's wrong, and it's nowhere in our procurement policy. Mr. Nesrul is purposely sabotaging us, and it's putting us in a state that I think that cover-up is trying, is being covered up, and they do not want it to be uncovered. If we are not doing the right thing, shame on you, Mr. Director, the tenants of the, our community deserve better. And you say that you are part of our mission statement, but you are showing us that you are against us. I have nothing further.
So I just wanna make a comment.
Mr. McCormick, Mr. McCormick.
Uh, you know.
Point of order.
Kevin, you can like, you can like, we can.
You're arguing.
You're on the board, we're not.
Let's get out of here.
Come on, let's go. Mr. Alon.
I know.
Is it?
You, you get mad about it, okay? But, but, respect.
Would you, would you show the same respect, Mr. Director? Can you show the same respect? Would you be respectful?
It doesn't argue, we don't argue.
About this program, okay? And we're gonna follow every team, we're gonna process every team and done every eye on this program to deal with you. And, and, and they already passed, uh, the resolution to get an attorney, you're getting up an attorney now, so you, the attorney is a bit, those things, if you want to do a project, you are not required to go with the team and run the unit, and we will not allow that to happen. Thank you. Thanks for inviting me, I'm leaving this meeting, I gotta go deal with my family, thank you.
I look forward to you proving what you said. A person can fix their mouth to say anything, and that's what you're doing? These tenants need an attorney.
Anyway, so the question, I have a comment, so, um, I agree with you, Commissioner Vincent, that there are some things that we can do without an attorney to start off with, which we can make resolutions and things of that nature, but it still ends with us needing an attorney to even procure those contracts and agreements for the work to even be done, for example, like the tree services. We gotta get the bids out, and then we gotta get it in, and then we gotta hold on, but there's legal questions brought up with that, because we got, how many bids do we have?
We had two for the tree service.
We don't even wait for three, it's in our policy.
Yeah, three for that one, if there's over one. Right, we had, we had two, but I, I did go to three, and the other three never responded, so I do have the name of the three. And then what I did is, me and Mr. McCormick spoke, and we gave part, because I, I had to break it down, and so we gave part of it to John's Tree Service, and then the remainder will be, uh, to Noah's.
See, that doesn't make sense.
Motion, we can do that.
We can do that. And what we did is, they gave us calls for certain and particular things, and from there, we took the lowest and the highest bid.
I, I move from my motion to adjourn to the meeting, we move to the next. On the roll.
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Benny. Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Talani Rayner.
Aye.
Motion or meeting?
Thank you.